I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's the Holiday Island City Planning Commission meeting of July 12th at one o'clock. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance.
Come on, get up.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Alright, roll call.
Chairman Keys, here. Vice Chair Pittman, here. Commissioner Elwood, here.
Commissioner Graves, here.
Commissioner Mills. I'm Markie Madison. Secretary Dumas, here.
I declare a forum. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Linda and a second by Jerry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We have minutes from the April 12th meeting that been distributed. Ever any... well, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
We've moved to approve the minutes for April 12th.
I made a motion to approve the minutes. Pat seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We have no reports, no old business, so we can go on to new business. And as usual, I'm gonna turn it over to Lynn.
Okay, first item is we're gonna review the recommendations in the proposed zoning regulations. The agenda says attorney recommendations, but there's also edits in there that I've contributed for consideration. So if you have the document open, it's at the top of the page. The very first thing is we need to change the title from zoning regulations to planning and zoning. So where that occurs in the document, it's changed multiple places. Also, in the first paragraph, section 101, in the zoning regulations, we're talking about not only the map, but also the map table. That map table is associated with that zoning map as our controlling documents. We're trying to find the feature that says how the particular property unit, block and lot is owned. So we'll scroll down through this. In section 1.03, it was recommended that we add this text that the regulations are intended to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So those words were added by the attorney. Any problem with that? Nope? Okay. Scrolling to inside that dot four of the recognizing that the ice that exists, we're going to say the city intends to develop the ordinances and regulations to work in conformity with the available declaration of reservations to the extent possible pursuant to the Arkansas State statutes. But thinking it's better language. Okay, in 104, the word water was inserted to be that these regulations will apply to the land, the water, the buildings, and structures. Then scrolling down. I'm into definitions now. In the discussion with the attorney, he suggested that we define every use that's in our table that we have at the bottom of the document that shows within each district what is approved or conditional uses. So these additions are here that we need to make sure that we have agreed to. First one was for farmers market agricultural. Local residents, temporary produced stands, selling personally grown approved vegetables, farm products, or provisions participating in outdoor markets, or special events organized, administered, or approved by the city. The only concern I had in there when I reread this is do we need to be approving farmers markets as a city? I don't know if leaving it out is important or not. And this is a definition that I... all these definitions I found from different ordinances or just from searches using simply Wikipedia, so.
So your question again is what?
It ends that more special events organized, administered, or approved by the city.
I can see issuing perhaps permits some point in the future, but I mean, is it listed here because it could be a conditional use or a use of property?
I don't recall in tables. We have to look at the end of the document.
Yes, I mean, that would infer that it's a permanent kind of thing.
Sure. It's probably conditional.
Even conditional would be on a permanent basis going forward.
Could be. Or the condition could be for this one and then only whatever is decided. I think it's okay to be an or, but I just wondered if we should add the language in there. I don't think it hurts to have it.
I don't think it hurts anything.
Okay. Next definition I added was for airport and airstrip. An air land or water which is used or intended for use for the landing and takeoff of aircraft in any... I can't pronounce it, effurant area.
It's can.
Effurant.
Yep.
Any.
You're ten.
Okay, I'll make sure that works, the right word. Which are used intended for use for airports, buildings, or other airport facilities, or rights away, together with all airport buildings, facilities, located thereon. I know we don't anticipate having airports, but if it is in one of our tables, there's the use.
I wonder if landing pads for helicopters would fit under here and so, should we add that?
Well, it does say aircraft.
It says aircraft.
Yeah.
Landing and takeoff of aircraft.
But we would want to specify where they can have, where you can land a helicopter.
Okay. Alright. Next definition added was for automated teller machines, ATMs. Defined as an unmanned electronic banking facility in which banking transactions may be accepted and/or cash dispersals made. Bar or lounge. An establishment that only sells and serves alcoholic drinks or consumption within the establishment. Bar is not permitted to operate in any district of the city of Fallinale. In our long discussions in the past, I believe the state says you can't seem to have a bar. Okay, scrolling down to definition.
Lynn, if you want to go back to that word we couldn't pronounce.
Yes.
A whatever it is on a parcel of real property that is a dominant estate is sold, but easement runs with the land and is still available to the new owner of the land of the same parcels.
Okay. So it makes sense that it's there.
Why do they have a word for that?
Yeah.
No one can pronounce it.
Again, the next definition I added was fowl. I have a domesticated bird such as, but not limited to, turkey, duck, goose, guinea, rouse, quail, pheasant, swan, eepie, or ostrich.
It didn't include the word, although it's not limited to those, but it didn't include the word chicken, which is the only context in which we're using it in this class.
And we talked about that in the subsection of hobby chickens, so. Shall I insert the word chicken?
I think it'd be clearer if it was inserted.
Next definition is landfill. Also known as a tip, dump, rubbish dump, garbage dump, dumping ground. Is a place to dispose of refuse and other waste material by burying it and covering it over with soil. Landfill use is not permitted in any zoning district of the city of Fallinale. Liquor store. A retail shop that predominantly sells prepackaged liquors typically in bottles usually intended to be consumed off the store's premises. Next definition, museum. A building or institution that carries forward displays a collection of artifacts and other objects of artistic, cultural, historical, or scientific importance. On shop. A shop where possessions are left in order to borrow money or buy objects that others have left there that are now for sale. Planning and zoning official. This was needed for certain because also in the document, there's been a title of either code enforcement officer, or building inspector, or whatever has been replaced by this term, planning and zoning official. So definition is the administrative official designated by the mayor, the minister of the subdivision regulations, planning and zoning regulations, and any other development related regulations to the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Is that definition okay, Mr. Mayor? As we get to.
I don't know that I want to appoint somebody with the title of planning and building official.
You don't.
You don't. It's whatever official carries out that role.
Whether it be a building inspector, could be a house enforcement.
A building inspector or a code enforcement officer.
Or it could be someone else for some of the purpose that you're appointed. So the text covers it generally by saying planning and zoning official. It makes it more generic. Yeah, makes it more generic. Okay?
Yeah, except for the fact that I don't see this as being one person. There are things that the building inspector can handle, but if somebody wants to say, I want to build a subdivision over here, you know, a building inspector wouldn't handle that. So I'm wondering if the planning and zoning official wouldn't actually be the chair of the planning commission.
It could be if that's who you appoint to do it. I mean, that gives you the lead way to...
Okay, yeah, that's good.
Okay. The next definition is important because we must, it's called city planning commission. It's important because we must in our document make sure that in every place that we're here in these regulations, that we don't have any confusion with the developers' planning commission that was named in the covenants. Should it be established sometime in the future? So every place in the document where it says planning commission, I hope I've inserted the word city planning commission. Definition. The advisory body of the city council with only those powers established within the Holiday... excuse me, Holiday Island. Holiday Island ended this quote. The planning and zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and as may be branded to it by the city council. Post office. A local branch of a national post office handling the mail for a particular place or area. A recreational trail, foot or bicycle. An urban paved or unpaved trail designated for use by pedestrians and/or bicyclists to provide a recreational experience. Recreational trail for motorized vehicles. Trail is designed to provide a recreational experience, a primitive trail in an area where there are no maintained roads or permanent buildings permanently used by motorized vehicles, including not limited to ATV, motorcycle, and motorbikes. Next definition is short-term rental. Defined as a dwelling unit or portion thereof is offered or provided to a guest by a short-term rental owner or operator for a fee for fewer than thirty consecutive nights, in the form of tourist or transient accommodations. They're commonly referred to as vacation rentals.
Select a flight to an elegant means or motel.
When so. This is a dwelling unit that's offered for rent fewer than thirty nights.
That's the definition that knows that on these adopted.
I think I found that in a couple of ordinances.
Yeah. Yeah, I left it in to thirty days. And that, but then that gives us room to do what we're gonna do, study that more specifically.
One of our uses was called soil borrowing. It's materials like soil or gravel are taken from a borrow pit, sometimes called a sandbox, to be used in another location. These materials may be used for grating, fill, or mixing with other construction materials like concrete.
I've never heard once referred to as sandbox.
Want to change the word? No, in where I grew up, it was called the sand pit.
Yeah.
Or gravel pit. Okay. Topsoil. The upper outermost layer of soil, usually the top two inches to eight inches. It has the highest concentration of organic matter and microorganisms.
And why does that relate to the Holiday Island?
We don't have some type of guarantee of the top rock.
It's just something we've, something we've heard about.
Two inches would be a big.
It's in this text, the topsoil. Alright, communications tower. A structure designed to support antennas for telecommunications and broadcasting. May include television, cellular phone, wireless internet, or radio signals. Almost done with definitions. We are done. It's the only definitions I had.
It's good.
And I guess I'll say it now so I don't forget. These additions we talked about today and the ones I put in there need to go through or turn to yet. There'll be another chance for him to review the document. The section 4.03, again, we changed the planning and zoning official, the term that was there. And it's a first occurrence here where we talk about a board adjustment. In the previous versions of this text, we always said board adjustment, but it's been recommended it's the board of zoning adjustment that aligns with the statutes. There's no confusion what zoning or what kind of adjustment they're making. So every place that occurs, that change has been placed. Okay. In section 6.0, the establishment of zoning districts and boundaries, I think it's important that in the G-F, the government district, we add the word or state. So we didn't have any state in this zoning area. There might be state offices or uses, so we have federal or state control. Just expand the definition. In 6.02, I've inserted the zoning hierarchy. That takes place when we have issues with development in one area, someone's requesting a change in the use of a property. And we have to decide if the joining property is a higher or lesser intensity. And so I had to insert the, and the RW, the rule within that list that's not included in that hierarchy. It had been left out. In 6.03, it's the first occurrence here where we've got the attached city of Holiday Island UBL, the unit block lot zoning map table. So that phrase has to be included where we talk about the table or the map, any revisions or changes to it. Okay. Right above 6.04, there's a paragraph that's been added. And this has to do with changes. So it says regardless of the existence of purported copies of the official zoning map and official zoning map table, which may from time to time be made or published, the official zoning map table, excuse me, map and zoning map table located in the office, the city hall, city hall of Holiday Island, Arkansas, shall be the final authority as an current zoning status of property within the city limits of Holiday Island. This has been inserted by our attorney because he's had experiences where someone will be relying on an old copy. So this is saying the official copy is the one that we have now.
Can I back you up to the sentence I had? The second paragraph of 603.
Okay.
There's a sentence, the second sentence of that paragraph that starts out, boundaries or other data for trade on and attached official zoning map table to the official zoning. That sentence needs to be fixed.
Okay.
It's word very frequently.
Okay.
And I would suggest we change that line to read boundaries or other data for trade on the attached official zoning map table or the official zoning map.
That makes more sense to me. In 604, we've got the changes we've been talking about, we're changing the names. Scrolling down to 607, again, we had inserted the word official zoning map. More of the title changes in 702, just so it says the zoning official and/or the city planning commission. I guess that's important because we're talking about the district uses. So use is not listed. When a use is proposed that is not listed in this chapter, the city planning and zoning official and/or the city planning commission shall recommend appropriate districts based on land uses of similar-sized bulk and traffic generation. So it's important that it'll include the planning commission in that decision move as well. Okay. I have a note. I have a note at the bottom of the table that in the agricultural uses of the residential districts, that we need to come back and maybe revisit this after we've talked about 16.30 about hobby chickens. Because we have in R2s written... What's P? I'm sorry.
Permitted.
Permitted, yes. So like we're talking about 16.30, we've got to be sure to change this table if we have a change in R2s.
Well, there is wording down there that it's not being allowed in.
Right. If we approve that change, that's right. Okay, going down a few more pages. Those are title changes in that section. In 7.08, the government district zoning, because we changed the definition of above, we included the words or state in a couple of places in paragraph B. For federal or state control of government agencies.
Oh. Yeah, you need to add under 705, maybe paragraph C, to make it like it was shown under C in 702 residential, you need to add the word city in front of planning and zoning official.
Oh, okay.
At least that's the way it would be.
Yeah.
Was.
I missed it. Okay, thank you. Yeah?
And, oh, and then you'd say we do want to also add and/or the city planning commission after the official. Like you have.
Yes, like we have.
Residential, like in 02.
I agree.
That's to make it consistent.
The city.
Alright.
Planning and zoning. Okay, we got it. Okay. Moving on. Section 12 is conditional uses. So all of section 12 is about the things that are brought before the planning commission when someone asks for a conditional use of a property that's not permitted. So I'm scrolling down to, I mean, section 1203, the procedure for authorizing. And under paragraph 2B, Justin recommends that this requirement change so that the, be the same as the board of building adjustment. He recommends removing our social media content that we had in here. He said it's okay that we do social media posting, but it should not be in the regulation because the state statute does require it. So what I put in Graves, or what I left in Graves, what was there originally in the text that's, well, and B1 is what's been added.
That won't alter our... helps to become social media, right?
No, it doesn't change that. He said it's okay. I told him the different Facebook pages in the next door that we put it on, and in fact, we have a city website. He said that's all okay. It just says you don't want to put in the ordinance, the requirements should be what the state statute has. There's nothing wrong with posting it there. In fact, he encourages it all the better. The more you do that, the better. So in this B1, the notice. On determining that an application is properly complete, the planning and zoning official and/or city planning commission secretary shall ensure that the matter is set for public hearing before the city planning commission. City planning commission secretary shall schedule a public hearing meeting in keeping with the adopted planning calendar for the city and give a meeting notice of the time and place thereof. Meeting notice shall be published at least one time, fifteen days, receiving the date of such meeting and a newspaper or general circulation in the city. Meeting notice shall give the particular location of the property in which the application is requested, as well as a brief explanation of the variance request. Now I've added this text. Additionally, the city planning commission secretary shall provide notes by first-class male, the boards, the directors of the school districts affected by this matter. That text comes right from the statute and follows a notification we need to make in press. So it's something that I was reminded by the attorney, we need to also do that. Paragraph 2, the applicant shall post notice on weatherproof signs provided by the city, place the signs on the empty property, excuse me, on the property that is the subject of the application at least fifteen days before the public hearing, and ensure that the signs remain continuously posted until a final decision is made by the city planning commission. One sign shall be posted. One sign shall be posted by the applicant in each of the subject property's corners letting the public street. Instances where the subject property is not a letting of a street, one sign shall be placed at each of the subject property's corners letting an access easement and shall also post one sign at the intersection of said access easement and the public street. Required public sign notice, excuse me, republic. Required public notice signage shall not exceed four signs. Signs shall be placed in a conspicuous manner that makes them clearly visible to neighborhood residents and passersby. Oh, that's a highlighting error that I made in the posting. Paragraph one and two is supposed to be all gray. It's yeah, it's replaced by the text below. I'm in error when I posted that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all part of one and B one, B two is being replaced below that I just read. Okay, in section C, it also recommends that the planning commission be empowered to approve requests of the conditional use permits. So he's suggesting we strike the C one and two that we had and replace it with the text below. And what it says now is in C one, the city planning commission review in action. The city planning commission shall review traditional use permit applications at a regularly scheduled meeting in keeping with the adopted planning calendar of the city, at which time interested persons may appear at the required public hearing and offer information in support of or against proposed conditional use following the public hearing. And after deliberation, the city planning commission may approve the application as presented, approve the application with condition, table the application with cause for not to exceed one month or deny the application. An approval or approval with conditions shall require an affirmative vote of a majority of the authorized membership of the city planning commission. That last sentence is important, that majority of the commission, so right now the commission has six lines, so it would have to be a four person vote. Doesn't tie towards the quorum of present, but that's to be a four person affirmative. In paragraph two, in approving such conditional uses, the city planning commission may impose such conditions and restrictions upon the premises as it deems necessary to reduce or minimize the adverse effects of the use. Compatibility of the surrounding property shall be ensured to the maximum extent practical. If the city planning commission denies a conditional use application, the reasons for such action shall be given in a written response to the applicant within fifteen days from the date of the decision. If the conditional use application is denied by the city planning commission, no application for such use or similar use shall be permitted involving part of the same property for a period of six months. So there's more instruction in there than what we had in our original. And then in section D, the attorney recommends that the planning commission be empowered to approve requests again. And so this is when rewritten as well. We just had one paragraph in D and now it's a couple. D one, no decision of the city planning commission granting a conditional use permit under this section shall become effective until after a lapse period of fifteen days from the date of the city planning commission hearing during which the request was heard. During this fifteen day period, an appeal of the decision, whether to grant or deny the permit may be taken to the city council by filling the letter of appeal with the, filing a letter of appeal with the city recorder ledger. The letter shall state the nature of and reasons for the appeal. Following persons or entities may appeal. The applicant, the property owner or leaseholder who owns or leases property within three hundred feet of the property to which the conditional use applies. City council shall hear such appeal and consider all relevant evidence required to rendering your final decision. City council may vote to grant or deny conditional use permit. Paragraph two, if the city council denies a conditional use permit, the reasons for such action shall be given in written response to the applicant within fifteen days from the date of the decision. If the conditional use permit is denied by the city council, no application for such use or similar use shall be permitted involving part of the same property for a period of six months.
I have an issue.
Okay.
But this paragraph D one says that they have fifteen days after getting the decision from the planning commission to file an appeal, fifteen days.
Yes.
However, in the previous paragraph, their par- pre- previous section where it's talking about how the city planning commission issues its decision, it says that the city planning commission shall evidently give the petitioner its reasons for such action and has fifteen days after they've made the decision to give them the full details of the decision. I don't think it's fair to have to file an appeal in that same fifteen day period. I think it ought to be extended at least to another fifteen days.
Well, could you change it to upon the official notification that it has been appealed, that fifteen day starts?
I guess so, if you can kind of establish the date they received it.
Well, if you send a certified or extra.
Certified, you have that.
You have the signature.
Have that. Establish, yeah. That would be a way to do it.
That'd have to be defined in the in the regulation. The official means of notification.
Yeah, you have to put that in there.
That establishes the start.
From certified mail.
I mean, I think that that would be the way to do that, to have that record of it was mailed on this, you're standing for it this day, fifteen day clock starting.
Okay, so the change we need to make is in.
The third from last sentence in number two, under C two.
C two.
C two, the third and last sentence there.
Yeah.
You could have to written response by certified mail. Right after that. And then, then you could say receipt, fifteen days of receipt. In the, in the D.
Plan, we talked at one point, and I maybe jumped the gun, but is there going to be some fees on all these appeals and?
Yes, there are, they're filed because of the press release we have to have and it's to cover those expenses.
So is that in here somewhere?
The fee schedule's at the end.
At the end, okay.
So what I inserted was given a written response by certified mail to the applicant within fifteen days from the date of what, the date of receipt?
Date of the decision.
Of the fifteen days, the date of the mailing.
Oh, no.
You need the date that they received it, to be fair.
Well, I'm thinking, I mean, you're, if you're in C two.
I'm in C two.
You're still talking about the mailing of the res- of response to the person that.
Okay, yeah, so the city would have to send that in fif- fifteen days. Certified, in fifteen days of the decision.
Of the, of the, the decision.
Right.
And then down in, in D, it would be.
The, the applicant has fifteen days from the receipt of the.
Of the certified.
Of the certified letter. To file a conditional appeal.
So. Maybe that you're going to have to split that sentence out a little bit, maybe that.
I'm just making a note and understand what you need to, what we want to do, so. Review. Needing to set the feel after the receipt of denial. Oh, after the receipt of. This would be about a denial. What if, what if someone wants to protest an acceptance?
Well, they could, yeah.
All right, let's see, after. Now that's, that's what we have to separate, because if it's accepted, if the city council says it's okay, if somebody over here wants to protest that decision, they don't get any letters.
I wonder how they, I wonder how they find out about the decision, they have to be there perhaps, or.
Or see it.
Or see it in the dents or something like that.
But, you know, if, if the city planning commission approves a conditional use permit that gets appealed, they're asking timing on that too. This is kind of written like if it's been accepted and someone's appealing that acceptance.
Or it's been denied and they, they're appealing the denial because one that asked for it, the only reason they would appeal is if they were denied.
So what? We would need to post that decision some way to start that clock?
Well, just having a meeting and dropping the gavel starts the clock.
Well. From, from some point in time where maybe the neighborhood even know what was going on.
Can, I'm, I'm just asking a question, this has nothing to do with fairness. But just technically, can an interested third party file an appeal?
Yeah, who could file an appeal?
In my research, the word interested talks about, there's a list, and I believe the piece over in here later on, that it's a property owner or VC or someone tied to the property.
It's in the, it's in.
So if we have a hearing on a conditional use or a meeting, then comment on anybody joining property owner to be at that meeting and raise an objection then.
Yes, because when the hearing is concluded, there's typically no more, there's no more testimony about the decision or about the hearing. The hearing is a set date, it's formal, probably requires swearing in witnesses and the evidence. And it's my understanding, the planning commission is then it's quasi judicial, so we can only act on the evidence that's presented. Can't, can't act on anything that we might know or be told.
We say in D one, the following persons or entities may appeal. The applicant, a property owner or leaseholder who owns or leases property within three hundred feet of the property to which the conditional use applies. So you have to be a property owner or be leasing property within three hundred feet of conditional use.
However, that, that sentence is actually in conflict with B two. So if you read the, from the top of B two, the people that they have to notify, that, that the applicant has to present evidence to states all property owners within two hundred feet in the boundaries of subject property. They have to notify them for the hearing.
Right.
And he has to have certified receipts and he's notifying, but, but it's, it differs from the people that could appeal. That's what I'm saying. Wouldn't, shouldn't you have the same audience in both?
It would, it would seem logical that it would be the same.
That way you know, like, if you've had, had those evidence of certification mailing at the hearing, you know they were, they were made aware of the hearing. And if they were really interested, they would follow up somehow to see what the results was.
Is there a chance that that three hundred feet or two hundred feet is specified in the law?
I didn't find it in place because there is no, I can't say no, there's limited if any statute about conditional use permits. The attorney says that that's a, not a twist, but it's, it's a facility that cities and municipalities have in planning that's not in the statutes.
Probably a local decision.
Probably we, we need to make a decision whether we want two hundred feet or three hundred. That's still an answer to the question, when that adjacent property owner has to request that appeal?
Would we be kind of implying then that if, if you have to notify people within two hundred feet of the hearing, does that mean that you have to notify them also of the decision?
Well, if they were notified at the hearing and were interested, they could use their own devices to find out the results if they didn't attend. They will have minutes, will have recordings. There's a number of ways they could find.
I'm just thinking that, you know, the, the right to appeal and all that kind of stuff, that it would seem logical that everybody that's getting the letter upfront and has the, you know.
Well, bear in mind, the, the person who appealed is responsible for mailing those certi- certified notices.
Okay. So if, if they come to the hearing without proof that it's been done, they don't get to be heard. Because it's a conditional hearing.
Okay, so it's either two hundred feet or three hundred feet.
I changed it to two hundred to make myself know, we need to reconcile with B two to be the same audience.
Okay.
So it'll be something work out. Work on the text and then submit it to the attorney. Okay. Back to the approval, no changes. It is a long change, okay. In sixteen dot oh two. All there? Okay. Adult entertainment. Justin recommends that reducing the distance to make it possible or to happen and/or create a district definition in uses section without assigning any law or parcel. That will enable an applicant to have due process rather than the case created here that we had, which makes it impossible to do so. Apparently, the language we have on here, making adult entertainment located more than a mile away from a church, library, daycare center, elementary, middle school, high school, single family duplex, whole of having residential, makes it impossible in our community to do that, so it violates our First Amendment right that they may have. So he recommends we reduce the distance. I took the map and put a scale on it, and there are some areas in Halle Island that are less than a quarter of a mile at thirteen, no, a half mile, thirteen hundred and twenty feet away. So it's possible then that it could happen. We change the one mile distance to a half mile. No, excuse me, quarter mile.
Quarter, thirteen hundred and twenty is not a half mile.
Yeah, quarter mile.
So why do you want to?
He says we, we, there, we create First Amendment issues if we leave it one mile distance. Make it impossible for someone to do it.
What is a half mile?
Excuse me, half mile.
I'm pretty certain there are some towns that have don't even allow it at all.
That's kind of what I was thinking, we could, in fact, I said let's not allow it when we first went through it.
And that was a conversation that we had.
Everyone else wanted it, so.
He said that we'll create First Amendment issues if we leave it at the twenty-sixth quarter.
Quarter of a mile is about three blocks, right?
Yeah, three city blocks.
Either ten or twelve blocks to a mile, which one, three to nine.
I'll leave it at likely anyway.
But no, that's true, but. I'm okay with a thirteen hundred feet.
It's just a couple, a couple of corners of the community where that would happen.
So he says they have a right to do that.
He said we create a First Amendment issue if we leave it set this far where basically keeps it impossible to do inside our city limits.
So would it be a First Amendment issue to disallow?
Apparently, that's what this does, it disallows it, so we create.
Well, it makes it impossible to do with such stringent things, but if you were banning it all together.
That's what I meant.
So I think, I, I think we ought to ask him that question, I mean, we got to revise it. Go with the quarter mile, but then ask the question, are we on the playground?
You're disallowing a bar. It makes no sense that you can't disallow, you know, adult entertainment. It really doesn't make any sense to me at all.
I think that's state law.
Well, you know, there is no bar in Arkansas.
You can't have just a bar.
Well, how do they get away with it?
You can have, you can have a bar, all you can serve.
State constitution.
All you can serve is beer and wine in a, a bar. But if you've got a liquor license and can seat fifty people and serve them a diverse menu, you can serve mixed drinks.
You, you have a First Amendment right to speech, you don't have a First Amendment right to drink beer.
I guess that's.
Whoa, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Alright, so I, I make myself know, can we deny it all together and not create the First Amendment issue?
Just, just ask.
Alright, I'll say that. Alright, where's the next change? Okay, the next change is in sixteen dot thirty, hobby chickens. The seven pair sentences we had in here, trying to recommend that we rewrite it and include more text. I'm guessing it just so that it gives us more ability to make sure that it's done right. I'll just read sixteen dot thirty. Hobby fowl, hobby chickens. Following words, terms, and phrases when used in this section shall have the meaning described in them in this section, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. Animal control officer means the officer employed by or under contract with the City of Holliday Island is, is responsible for animal control operations in the City of Holliday Island. I've inserted, city code enforcement official may be designated as an animal control officer by a mayor for this section sixteen dot thirty.
Right.
Animal running at large means an animal off the premises of the owner or off the premises of any person having charge of an animal and not under the control of the owner or person in charge or member of his immediate family by leash, court, chain, or otherwise. Paragraph A, it shall be unlawful for any person to permit or allow any hobby chicken domestic fowl and including domestic ducks to run at large within the corporate limits of the city. It shall be lawful to keep poultry flocks of any size in the R W units or rural wooded zones of the city so long as the fowl are in mind. It shall be lawful for any person to keep, permit, or allow any fowl within the corporate limits of the city and only zones R one and R one M under the following conditions and term, terms and conditions. One, no more than four hens. Fowls shall be allowed for each single family dwelling. No birds shall be allowed in multi-family complexes, including duplexes, townhomes, and condominiums. No roosters shall be allowed. There shall be no outside slaughtering of fowls. All fowl must be kept at all times in secure enclosure. Secure enclosure shall include a self-contained coop and/or within a fenced fenced yard. The fenced yard shall only suffice as an enclosure except that it is obstructed from the solid, non-cremable material built with either wood, metal, or plastic components. Coops must be situated at least twenty-five feet from the nearest neighbor's residence or dwelling. Must be located in the rear or side yard, not placed in side yards or corner lots, and not in the front yard. Enclosures must be kept in a neat and sanitary condition at all times and must be cleaned on a regular basis so as to prevent offensive odors. All food used for chickens shall be kept in a suitable container with a tight-fitting cover so as to be inaccessible to rodents. Paragraph eight, I'll read it, and I have a question mark on paragraph eight. Persons wishing to keep fowl within the city limits, obtain a permit from the city, inspection will be scheduled by the animal control officer. And to approve the permit holder must pay an annual fee of twenty dollars a year or as established in amendment from time to time.
Why would the fee be in the back of the statute?
It would be if we're going to do it. And I just have a question, do we really want to require a permit for chickens? Or shall we start off with the text that's here? If it becomes a problem, we could change it.
Kind of like that idea. Or should we require a building permit on the coops? Make sure they meet all these conditions?
Well, it'd be an accessory unit we require for garages, right? It would permit any structure.
Or twine or fences.
Do we require fences?
No, we won't require a building permit for fences.
Oh, is that because it's a building? I mean, the cabinet's always spread more than this is.
They, they wanted to approve them, but they never, they didn't issue building permits for them.
I don't know, Jerry, I don't recall. If, if we classified a chicken coop or enclosure to be something that needed to be permitted. I'm just in favor of striking this eight altogether, at least to start with.
It could look worse than an orange chip.
I don't remember earlier, just, yes, you can.
If it was an operational thing?
Our earlier discussion, I don't remember us talking about ducks. We're going to allow hobby ducks.
No, but it's covered in foul in that definition. Chicken, comma, foul in the definition, foul includes ducks. Is that what you're asking, are we going to cover ducks?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's covered in the definition.
And I don't want it covered by ducks.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Now, wait a minute, are we confusing things? This is a hobby chicken.
Except we, we, we've added foul to allow ducks.
Yeah, or, or emus.
Yeah, ostriches.
I think this needs to be limited to hobby chickens.
Okay.
We don't want, we don't want turkeys.
Excepting that as defined, the, the wooded areas that are, you know.
Well, A, under sixteen thirty, says it's unlawful for any person to permit or allow hobby chicken domesticated fowl, including domesticated ducks to run at large within the city.
Right, but then B says it's lawful if you contain them.
And only lawful apparently, you are, don't you?
Right. So the conversation is, we're going to allow anything other than chickens?
I agree with Dan, we should.
No, I think, there's an interest in hobby chickens. I don't think we want to expand that, you know, presumably that peacocks and.
Okay, so they added notes that they reformat this to be only chickens. We're only in the right places.
But, and it's not in the definitions.
I want to work on that too. We have chicken, comma, hobby defined at the top.
Oh, you mean, oh, except for chicken?
Chicken, hobby.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And it's, oh, just because it uses the generic word foul.
Right.
And I, I think, personally, I think that the, um, in, in paragraph four, where it says all fowl must be kept at all times in a secure enclosure, I think we need to strike the whole thing about fenced yard.
Okay.
They need to keep them, they want chickens, they need to keep them in a little coop.
Okay, in an enclosure.
Yeah.
Something less than a little yard.
Otherwise, you're going to have somebody putting chicken wire all the way around their yard and have their chickens running around.
Okay. So it should be kept at all times in a secure enclosure.
Could they, could they maintain that the fencing around their yard is the coop?
No, and that was, I was starting to have second thoughts about the building inspector having to approve the chicken coop. I know David's been waiting to get into the chicken coop, coop approval business.
You could put some dimension limitations on the coop.
That'd be one way to make certain, it's a smaller subset of the lot. It could be, you know, less than twenty-five percent of the, you know, something like that.
Well, I mean, you mentioned the, the regulations on accessory buildings.
Right.
If we put the same standards on that. I mean, I don't know, something similar.
That's true, the accessory buildings can't be over, what, two-thirds the size of their living quarters.
Well, I mean, like I was spurred, Chad, hundred square feet is the max they can build without a permit.
Okay.
So, the hundred square feet big enough for ten chickens?
No, four, four chickens.
Four chickens.
Plenty big for four chickens.
But you need some room for them to walk around.
Not if you're Tyson.
If you're raising hobby chickens, I'm sure you'd want to do them somewhere to walk around.
Uh.
I don't know. I mean, can you know if it's straight?
Yeah, when you're chickens, they're just better right on.
I mean, there's, there's obviously, uh, people that want to do that. I think we're making accommodations, but it needs to be, there's been reasons.
I mean, there's all kinds of ideas for chicken coops for hobby chickens. I've looked on the internet, they even have ones that you can move around your yard so that they can eat bugs in a different section of the lawn every day. I would say that, for purposes of zoning ordinance, you might want to just say that the, the enclosure must be approved by the building inspector. Design of the enclosure or something like that. And we might want to add something to the actual building code.
Okay, I have the notice.
And, and they're zoned for all areas?
Only R one and R one M.
Well, and we need to talk about that in the paper to run.
Yeah, if, if that's what we're going to go with. Finish reading this real quick. Section, or paragraph C sixteen dot thirty is not intended to apply to indoor birds, which in the opinion of the animal control officer are kept as pets, including, as an example, but not limited to parrots and parakeets. Nor is it intended to apply to lawful transportation of fowl through the corporate limits of the city or applied to poultry or fowl kept in areas of the city that are zone R W, except for here and above. Fowl currently existing in the city shall not be grandfathered or permitted to remain after the effective date of this code, except as set forth here. Okay, so back to your question, Jerry, where is this allowed? It's only in paragraph A, only in zones R one and R one M. So it can't be anyplace else, no, no commercial areas, no industrial areas, no multi-family areas.
So in just single family home residential area?
And then I think the reason for that is that it's the only way you can create the amount of space away from other residents. It'd be pretty, it'd be impossible to have it more than something feet away from the other resident in your duplex. Pretty much impossible, so.
So what would be the maximum, someone, if Dan wanted to put one in his backyard on Holiday Island Drive, what, how big a coop could he be?
We, we haven't defined that, okay? It says convened in a coop.
Yeah, I think we'll have to cover that in the building code. And then note that, that they have chicken coops as a building code.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess my point is, is in small, smaller lots, I mean, even with just four chickens, if you get on a, you know, couple of block area, thirty-four people with four chickens, I mean, there's going to be a noise issue.
Could be, yeah. You know, and, and reading this, the concern I had too is, it's fine for the street when you drive by and these are all contained in the backyard, but some people have backyard neighbors. So. Anyway, let's go back to eight. Are we going to require a permit and a fee? Or are we going to start this without the, that requirement?
I don't, I don't think we would want a permit or a fee.
But he did mention he wanted the approval of the buildings, of the.
Yeah.
So we could put that in there.
Okay, we'll leave eight, we'll include the approval. That's where we'll put the, take off the permit fee.
This, this might be an issue that some of the public wants to get involved with when we have a hearing about offering our opinion about. Or having further, further restrictions or less restrictions or whatever.
No, that's a good point, right?
Okay, we'll move on then.
Now, it also says, this, this is an important word, under D.
Yes.
Did you read that one?
I read it, that they're not grandfathered in if they don't comply.
Yeah, but you've got people who have large lots right now.
Okay.
They're larger than four, I'm sure. And they have to be.
In the, in the ordinances that I found from other cities, four was the predominant number. Okay, I've gone into twenty-six dot zero two.
Before you, I, I just want to make a comment. Section sixteen point oh eight.
Okay.
Deals with manufacturing, manufactured housing subdivisions. I'm just bringing this up for information purposes today. David found an entire state statute on installation of manufactured homes, mobile homes. And we're going to have to make some additions to our building code to include that, that state code. It goes into detail about how you have to be licensed to sell them, to buy them and resell them, to install them, and stuff like that. And we got, you know, we got one project going on right now where I'm sure that none of that is being. I'm sure the guy doesn't know anything about any of that.
Don't all our building code regulations, don't they all specify that you have to, I mean, one's our codes and all the other codes, isn't that?
Yeah.
implied that they have to abide by all state laws?
No, the, um, manufactured homes now fall under a totally different, you know, since the federal government passed a regulation in nineteen seventy-six. Apparently, immediately after that, states set up manufactured home, manufactured housing commissions. And, and they have, it, it's kind of like their way of implementing or making sure that the federal standard is being, you know.
We made that revision, didn't we, by just saying that they must comply with the.
Well, that rule.
The federal regulations, could we do the same thing in?
That's why it's.
Yeah, just refer to the state statute?
Yeah.
We're not going to, we're not going to embed it in our.
No, I don't think so.
No.
We just refer to it by name.
By reference, yeah. Okay, under Board of Zoning Adjustment in section twenty-six, twenty-six dot oh two, paragraph A, we have the notification. Says, public notification shall be made by publication of the agenda of the meetings in a newspaper of general circulation to the City of Holliday Island at least one time, seven days in advance of the meetings. If the Board of Zoning Adjustment has a meeting or any other purpose than a hearing, then they have to publish the agenda in advance in a public, in a newspaper distribution. That's from the statute, so that's different than what the planning commission or the city council has to do, but a Board of Zoning Adjustment has to make publications of it. The advanced notice for hearings is fifteen days, but for just a meeting, it's seven days. Okay, twenty-six oh three. Twenty-six oh five and twenty-six oh six, that text is being replaced by what's supposed to, what's in gray is what was there, and.
Can I back you up?
Sure.
Twenty-six oh three.
Twenty-six oh three.
Under A, you've got administrative officers in two places there. Shouldn't that be the new wording, administrative officials or something like that? Shouldn't that be the wording, administrative officials or something like that?
I'll find out, because those words, made by administrative officer, was made by the attorney.
Yeah. But that's the first time I've seen it.
That's stated that way. Comment. I'll check. Sure.
And also it's down under C one. First line, the, yeah, C one, first line of C one, that's administrative officials. Chemicals. All the administrative officials, they're the most rated office.
In C one?
Um.
There you go.
Come on, get out of the place, you're close to the pole.
Board, everybody.
It's, it's been bored with you there outside.
We come. When.
So, I assume it's planning, it's on official.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me close those. Okay, again, twenty six oh five and twenty six oh six is being replaced entirely. And it has to do with that procedure of how appeals are handled. That's why you put this in here.
And you added the new O four too, it wasn't in there.
Uh, yeah, there's, what I did was I renamed it. If you look under O four, then it's O five, then you'll see O six, that used to be the O four. I just moved it down so that the appeals decision happens after all the text up above. So, O, yeah, I just moved O four down to O six, was the change. So, I need to read all that text that he put in there about, uh, just schedule the public hearing and. It's in the document that we have on, uh, the web. Anyway, it talks about, uh, notifying the schools and, uh, a notice of fifteen days and two hundred feet of the boundaries. And then the appeals of the board of zoning adjustment, which we've already decked, that was the major reason we changed it. In scope of the appeal, any person or vested interest, with a vested interest agreed by an administrative decision and interpret, interpreting any section of these planning and zoning regulations, they make an appeal. Applications of. And that, all applications or appeals shall be on forms provided by the city and include all minimum information. Summary.
That's all I want.
Twenty six oh five, the new text?
Oh, the O five, I thought you were down to O six.
No, no.
Two and O five, oh, okay.
And, um, B two, reasons why the applicant of the appeal contends that the administrative official error in his decision. Three, any new or pertinent information bearing on the case not previously considered by the administrative official that can, keen to like following the time at which the administrative official made their decision. Section C, notice of the appeal, notice of appeal shall be filed by the applicant or any other party of legal standing, the board of zoning adjustment, through the city recorder treasurer, within thirty calendar days of the decision. Together with such appeal fee, according to the adopted fee schedule. Public notice, while in receiving the notice of appeal, the city recorder treasurer shall inform the chairman of the board of zoning adjustment to set the matter for consideration on the board of adjustments. Next available agenda, give due notice to interested parties at the time and place of the meeting. Notice of such hearing shall be published at least one time, at least fifteen calendar days prior to the date of the meeting in newspaper of general circulation to city of Holiday Island. Then twenty six oh six, we changed that from, uh, appeal being heard by the city council to, any person or persons or any board, taxpayer, department, board or bureau of the city agreement by any decision by the board of zoning adjustment shall take the agreements to the circuit court of Carroll County, using the same procedure as for administrative appeals of the district report rules of the Supreme Court.
Well, I'm puzzled why we're taking out going to the city council court.
The experience of.
So it's only going to this three person board, and then it goes to a circuit court?
Yes. Because of, uh, of litigation that, uh, he's been involved in in other cities, it's become very, what is the word, it's complicated or involved.
I accept the city council.
When it goes back to the city council. He said, because of what we have to do as a board of zoning adjustment, having a formal hearing where you have evidence that's brought forward by sworn, um, sworn in people, and the board makes a decision, it's quasi, it's quasi judicial. It's like a, like a courtroom, you make a decision based on the facts that are presented only, and then you give a written response. And what happens if it goes to district court, they just review the record, it's not another hearing of this, of the, uh, information, it's go through the record, did the board make the right decision based on the evidence that was presented to it?
You mean?
That's how it's handled in the court.
But don't they make their decision based upon subjective information?
From what I've read, they make a decision based on the record.
No, I mean, the board of zoning adjustment, don't they make their decision based upon some subjective matter?
Yes, they would, people would bring evidence.
So how can the circuit court determine whether they subjectively made the right decision?
I guess they would evaluate the facts that are presented and decide, did he make the right decision or not?
So they're, so they're gonna make the decision for us. I mean, it's not just legal, that's what I'm saying. It's not just the legal matter, is it?
As far as I can see, it is.
Well, okay, it, it, it requires interpretation of the intent of the zoning regulations, doesn't it?
Sure. That's what the board, that's the responsibility of the board of.
Have a judge make that decision who's not familiar with anything out of the common eye.
They'll be familiar with the facts that are presented in the case, so the case facts would include the regulations. It would include the evidence presented and include the logic that the board of zoning adjustment took in rendering their decision.
So you're sure they're not general logic?
They have to, that's the requirement that we have. In order that we have to give a written, the board of zoning adjustment has to make a written response to the, to the claimant with its logic.
I just have some concerns about a three person board.
Interpreting stuff. When we talked about the makeup of that board, what was it gonna be? Do you remember?
Um, it's created in this document of three persons appointed and approved by the mayor.
So it's not any of us?
It could be us, but we decided to be separate for the board of zoning adjustment.
Okay, that, that's what I was getting at, so we, we did decide.
It can be the planning commission, it can be the city council, but we decided it would be three other individuals.
I have no doubt that Dan would make appropriate decisions about appointing three members that are knowledgeable and, you know, concerned with citizens and have the best interests of Holiday Island at heart. But if somebody wants to appeal that, it's going to.
How many boards would?
We haven't even lived here.
How many board, how many, uh, did you come to the planning commission? And you, how, how many boards would review the board back to that point?
Is the.
The planning commission and then to the board of adjustment?
This section is about decisions of the board of adjustment, and so appeals that they make. And the board of adjustment is always, uh, the board of adjustment is involved if the planning commission decides that a change in use happens, that someone wants to do something in a zone that's not permitted and they approve it. Someone appeals that that goes to the board of zoning adjustment.
But the planning commission's recommendation doesn't go to the city council?
No.
Cause that's your point.
Or less, yeah. Now, the planning commission in the future should be appointed people too, you know? Which means that the city council, the elected officials have no say so.
Any changes in zoning are approved by the city council?
And I think the planning commission, if we're not.
So it would.
May have a council members, they're gonna be appointed by the mayor too.
Okay, but any chan, he just said any zoning change would be.
Has to be approved, it's, it's, it's recommended by the planning commission to the city council for approval. City council, and, and in that process, the city council has a public hearing about it. And when they make a decision, if they say, do it, the city council has to have an ordinance that says so.
Yeah. And then that, that would go, if they appeal it, it would go to the board of adjustment.
Yes.
So it had, it had, would have, would have been discussed by the city.
You say every conditional use gets an ordinance?
No, zoning change.
Zoning change.
Zoning change.
So those are only zoning changes?
All zoning changes have to be approved by the city council, after they're approved by the city planning commission. I, I admit, I struggle with reading this too, and understanding how it all flows. But this was text that I had pasted in that the attorney recommended.
I get that, yeah.
Okay.
And when we are done hammering out the text, I think it would be appropriate to make some flow charts for, you know, that boils this all down into one piece of paper that, you know, here's your starting point. You know, your, your request goes, your initial request is reviewed by this board. If they say yes, you go down this route, no, you go down this route.
But at some point, it's, you gotta stop the process, I mean, the planning commission makes a, a determination, the city council does it, it goes to the board of the judgment, and they make a different recommendation, I mean, they appeal that, I mean, when, when, when does it stop?
Stops in the courtroom of this district court.
I know, but I would think if it's gone before all the bodies, that that, and that would be the point that they would have to take it.
I'm going to say I don't agree with what you said. Um, on the board of adjustment, board of zoning adjustment, go under twenty six oh three powers and duties. It says, um, they, they rule on non-impervent use of building structures, lands, they rule on the reasons for granting of variance to a zoning group.
Yeah, it's not a conditional use, that's a.
I know it's not a conditional use, but they're granting of variance, which doesn't change the zoning rule, it just gives them a variant, right?
They can, they can do that, yes.
So that doesn't change the law, and that would not go back to the city council?
Right. Yeah, so that is right there.
Yeah, but that can be appealed to this board of adjustment. That's what I'm saying. I just don't know that we wanna give that up to the twins or the district judge who knows nothing about this.
Well, to carry the process further, if the city council says the same thing the board of zoning adjustment says, and the applicant doesn't like it, he takes it to the same court that you still want to go to, and this court can still override the city.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't prevent the court from being involved. This statute, this regulation does not. Cause the end result is, is the courtroom.
And, yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
But I think at least it's gone from the small three member board that's appointed people back to some elected officials.
Okay.
That's, I guess that's my. My.
I'm just afraid that, that, um, you know, it costs nothing to appeal, if, if we allow the appeal to go to the city council, it costs nothing to, for them, for anybody to do that.
Unless we apply fees.
Generally, you know, you can almost anticipate that every answer that people don't like is gonna come to the city council.
That's why.
Is that what we want the city council doing?
That's why you put a fee on it to make it wherever it's got to be illegitimate. Rise to the, you know, I'm serious about this, you know, I'm willing to pay the fee to have it earned.
And somewhere I read, there was somewhere in here about the.
We talked about it, I mean, at some point when we started always.
The fees are in the table, you just looked at the table, the whole of the fees.
Yeah, but I also saw it in the text up here, together with a fee, it said, I don't remember where that was. Oh, here it is, uh, twenty six oh five C.
And that section is for the appeal.
Notice of appeal shall be filed by the applicant, blah, 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 with the city recorder treasurer, within thirty days of the decision, uh, together with such appeal fee according to the adopted fee schedule. And that's appealing to the board of zoning.
When we, when we first talked about that, I, I looked at some other cities, and a lot of them, Eureka, they charge fees just for some of that.
A fee for every appeal, because you gotta put notice out.
That's right, I mean, they're, they're not to make money, but you cover your expenses.
Yeah, and it does kind of make people think twice about, do I wanna make a big deal about this and it's not a big deal?
The appeal for planning mission interpretation of decisions is on a hundred dollars. In our table.
That's because we've got to do signs and, and, or red or certified letters.
So it can't be punitive, you know, it needs to cover our expenses. But it's, it's set at a hundred dollars.
I was thinking we might need to go back and look at every place that appeal was mentioned here, and use that same wording, make sure that wording was in there, so that people know that it would be a fee, rather than counting on looking at that table and happening on the fact of.
Well, where are we at? Are we, um, go with justice's recommendation and go to the court, or is it gonna come back to the city council?
Or he may be talking about areas that have a district judge that are in their cities. You know, some of the heat's out, we're in the town. We have a judge that lives in another county. Our judge.
Well, um, maybe the thing to do there is to, uh, have, are turning flesh out, uh, what the problems are coming back to the city council for all those that are here.
Yeah, uh, I guess, no, no matter how many steps we put in the process, it's going to end up in front of the judge anyway if they keep getting.
If they keep carrying.
If they keep getting the answer they don't want.
Right.
So, I mean, how many? How many steps are we going to?
I, I know it is an extra step, and maybe y'all don't agree with me, if you don't agree with me, you can say so. But, you know, I just think that you're counting on appointed people by a mayor make all those decisions.
That's, I mean, city's a lot bigger and more complicated than Holiday Island, you think that way. That's why you have commi, commissions and boards and stuff like that to, cause the city council can't be the, the final decision maker on every single thing that happens in the city. So, um, you know, that, that's why I think that it goes to the board of adjustment, and if they don't like it, then it can go to the judge, and they can make their case to the judge. The judge doesn't really, I don't know that the judge needs to know, you know, Holiday Island inside and out. He needs to know whether or not we're applying our regulations, you know, correctly or not.
Equally and fairly.
Equally and fairly, yeah. I mean, if, if somebody comes and they says, and they say, uh, I wanna put a duplex on this lot, and we've let, you know, a dozen other people build duplexes in that R one residential, but we tell him no, and it goes to the board of adjustment, and they say no, it goes to the judge, he's gonna say, let him build a duplex, cause you let everybody else build a duplex. But, you know, if he's the only one that's ever wanted to build a duplex there, and we say no, that's not an R one residential approved structure, and it goes to the judge, he's gonna say, they're doing what they, you know, what their regulations say. they're doing what they, you know, what their regulations say, and they apply that to everybody equally. So, I, I just don't think that, you know, in our situation here, I just don't think it's gonna come, come up very often. That somebody's going to, our variances are going to be, um, you know, I wanna build a patio, uh, or a covered patio on the back of my house, and it gets six inches into the golf course easement, you know, they're gonna need a variance for that. So, you know, that's the kind of thing we're gonna be dealing with. Not so much, uh, you know, that they wanna build, you know, a hospital in the middle of a residential area or something like that, you know, but I, I just don't think it's coming from up there.
Pretty much. Well, I think the ones that are gonna be trouble are the ones you don't think about today. You know, those are the ones that are gonna cause trouble. It's a situation you're not thinking about today. It's not the common situation, it's the uncommon situation. But don't make up your mind, you're all the four of one, so whatever you wanna do. I just wanted to make sure we brought it up. You'll bring it up.
Okay, we can move on for now. Again, this review of what we've done, there's a hearing yet to happen before any of it's accepted and inferred. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight oh four. The attorney has helped us flesh out, uh, the details of when we make changes to the zoning map and the zoning map table. He says, two types of amendments to these zoning regulations are recognized, one being a revision in the text provisions, and the other being a change in the boundary in a zoning district, also known as a map table amendment or rezoning. It's expressly understood that in exceptional circumstances, as may be determined, determined by the City Council, changes may be made by majority vote of the City Council as approved by the Arkansas Code. Text amendments, per F.A., amendments to the text may be initiated by the City Planning Commission, members of the City Council, or by the mayor. Proposed amendments shall be processed in accordance with the procedures set forth in this section. B, notice, the planning zoning official shall be responsible for scheduling a public hearing in keeping with the adopted planning calendar of the city before City Planning Commission. City Planning Commission Secretary shall prepare the contents of the public notice and ensure that the notice is published in a newspaper or general circulation within the city at least fifteen days before the public hearing. C, hearing and recommendation by the City Planning Commission. The City Planning Commission shall conduct a public hearing on the proposed amendment, hearing both the proponent and opponents, if any. Following the public hearing, the Commission shall determine its recommendations regarding the proposed amendment and make such known by approval of appropriate resolution to the City Council. Actions by the City Council after receiving the recommendation of the City Planning Commission, the City Council may approve the amendment as submitted, approve a revised version they deem appropriate, return it back to the City Planning Commission for further study and reconsideration, table it, or deny it. If the City Council action does not take place within three months of, after the City Planning Commission's public hearing, the amendment process must begin anew. Change in the district boundary, a change in the zoning district boundary as referred to as a map or table amendment or rezoning may be proposed by the City Council, City Planning Commission, or a property owner, or his, or her legal agent. Such amendments shall be considered in accordance with the procedures set forth in this section. A complete application for a change in zoning district boundary or map table amendment hereafter referred to as rezoning shall be submitted to the planning zoning official in order to establish, the inform established for that purpose along with non-refundable processing fee in the City Recorder Treasurer in the amount set forth in the notice thirty. Application shall be filed in keeping with the adopted planning calendar in order to be placed on the City Planning Commission agenda for their reading. No application shall be processed until the planning zoning official determines the application is complete and the required fee has been paid. Under notice, promptly upon determining that the application is complete, planning zoning official shall schedule a public hearing date in keeping with the adopted planning calendar of the city before the City Planning Commission. Notify the applicant of the hearing date, provide at least fifteen days' notice of the hearing in a newspaper or general circulation of the city, while it's in notice by first-class mail. The boards of directors of all school districts affected by the application shall be provided sufficiently in advance to allow representatives of all affected school districts a reasonable opportunity to submit comments on any proposed plan ordinance or regulation. The notice shall indicate the time and place of the public hearing, given the general location description of the property, such as the street address or area involved, describe the nature, scope, and purpose of the application, indicate where additional information about the application can be obtained. The applicant shall post notice on both of the signs provided by the city, place the signs on the property or the subject of the application at least fifteen days before the public hearing, and ensure the signs remain continuously posted until a final decision is made by the City Council. One sign shall be placed, posted by the applicant at each of the subject property's corners abutting in public street instances where the subject property is not abut a public street. One sign shall be placed at each of the subject property's abutting or access easement, and shall also post one sign at the intersection of said access easement or public street. Required public notice signage shall not exceed four signs. Signs shall be placed along each abutting street in conspicuous manner that makes it clear to the soul to neighboring residents and passersby. Individual property owners applying for changes to the official zoning map tables shall present a signed affidavit listing the names and addresses notified at least fifteen days prior to the required public hearing. And at all property owners within two hundred feet of the nominee of the property requested rezoning, including those properties on opposite sides of the public right-of-way, upon or to subject property as frontage, as been notified via certified mail of the proposed, some change included in time, date, and place of the public hearing. Hearing and recommendation by the City Planning Commission. City Planning Commission shall hold a public hearing on the proposed zoning rezoning, whether, at the conclusion of the hearing and after deliberation of the City Planning Commission, shall recommend approval as submitted, and recommend approval of lesser area and/or lesser intensity or similar classification than what was applied for table or cause or not to exceed one time for consideration at the next meeting, or deny the application. City Planning Commission shall, regardless of action taken, submit an accurate written summary of the proceedings of the city to the City Council. After the City Planning Commission recommends approval of the application, the city attorney shall be responsible for preparing the appropriate ordinance and requesting the City Recorder Treasurer place it on the City Council agenda. The city attorney and the planning zoning official shall review the proposed rezoning ordinance prior to its placement on the City Council agenda to verify that the contents of the document and the property description here accurately reflect the action taken by the City Planning Commission. If the City Planning Commission does not recommend approval of the application, the City Council may consider the matter only after an appeal is filed by the property owner with the City Recorder Treasurer within fifteen days of the City Planning Commission's final action. A special public hearing is set in subsequent held. Applicant responsibility with regard to filing documents with the City Recorder Treasurer is described above, but is also applicable. Considering the application for approval, whether an appeal or not, the City Council may reduce the amount of land area included in the application, but not increase it. It may change the requested classification in whole or in part to a less intense zoning district classification than was indicated in City Planning Commission's required public notice. The criteria for approval of rezoning are set out in this section. Not all the criteria must be given equal consideration by the City Planning Commission or City Council in reaching the decision. The criteria to be considered shall include, not limited to, the following. Consistency of the proposal with the comprehensive plan. Consistency of the proposal with the purpose of these regulations. Compatibility of, of the proposal with rezoning uses and character of the surrounding area. Skip number four is the same as three. Suitably, for suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted without the proposed zoning map table amendment. Six, extent to which approval of the proposed rezoning will detrimentally affect nearby property, including, not limited to, any impact on property value, traffic, drainage, visual impairment, odor, noise, light, vibration, hours of use, operation, and any restriction to the normal and customary use of affected property. Length of time the subject property has remained vacant or has zoned, as well as its zoning at the time of purchase by the applicant. Impact of the proposed development on community facilities and services, including those related to utilities, streets, street drainage, parks, open space, fire, police, emergency medical services. Sessive applications in the event the City Council denies an application for rezoning. Similar application involving any of the property considered in previous rezoning requests shall not be considered by the City Planning Commission for six months from the date of the denial by the City Council, unless the City Planning Commission, upon recommendation by the planning official, determines that there is a significant change in size or scope of the project or the conditions have changed in the area affected by the proposed rezoning. Appeals from the approval of rezoning by the City Council shall be taken to the circuit court and they're going to be using the same procedure as for administrative appeals to the district court or the supreme court. So, it lines out, uh, I think, in detail of, of what are the, what are the things that you consider, and make sure that you check all the biases, so it's logical in their decision. And that's all there is in the text to change. That's what we have so far through board today that we had to review. We didn't want to review it because we had proven this had been reviewed and approved all this text, but we had to go through it today.
Okay.
We have some discussion points.
Next up then, uh, you cleaned up a copy of this back to Justin.
I'll do that, and I've gotta be timely, because if, uh, we're going to consider this at the next Planning Commission meeting, as needing a public hearing, we've gotta have it done very quick. So I'll need some quick response from attorney as well.
Right? Anybody have any more comments on zoning ordinance itself?
Um, I've heard that there's been some activity on some, uh, areas in our city that aren't on our zoning table uh, because of, um, sales of property and subdividing, and some units have been created. Uh, I think we need to have those pieces of the table updated, as well as the UBL, before we put this out for final reading. Or is that before we submit it?
Is that what we were talking about, or what?
Unit three oh four that's subdivided?
Mm-hmm.
It's not in our table. So whatever, you know, if there's information that the, uh, building inspectors or building permits has, you know, available to us, we need to get that updated in here. That's part of the regulation, these tables.
Say that again?
If any changes that have happened, like, uh, parcels that have been subdivided and lots have been created, or lots have been subdivided, or new parcels created, then information needs to be in here in its, in its up-to-date form before we present it for approval.
Yeah, the only one I know of is unit three oh four.
Okay.
And we don't know that for sure yet.
Okay.
Robert Evans bought, um, it has owned for some time. Unit three oh four of the bluffs, it's that open lot with the drainage ditch running through it that's to the right of the, of Mountain Bird Coffee when you drive into the bluffs. And, um, he wants to build some houses on those. DataScout just shows it as being unit three oh four block one lot one. And he said when he went over to the county and talked to them, uh, they showed him where it already been subdivided into three lots. And he wasn't aware of that, but, you know, it's fine with him, he was just build three houses. But, um, I told him he needed to get that cleaned up and get back to us, but I'll call the assessor too and have her look into it. It may be something that was filed at one time by Tom, but just never made it to DataScout.
It never has some deep restrictions to try to get our hands on those too.
Yeah, there are, to, to his knowledge, there's no covenant on that parcel. So, we would have to determine what the easements would be and the setbacks would be and-
It'll be our title to that, so.
Would you put it in?
We would have to add it to our tables.
Okay.
Woo!
You didn't have a riz. A lot of riz.
Okay.
The design card fee schedule was in line with most city councils outside, or?
I got no feedback from, but-
That we compared the other counties somewhat?
I think we did that originally. I think we, we had, uh, the Tanti Town was the table we started with. As far as city as they are.
But expenses are pretty much the same anywhere. I mean, you gotta do signs and mail, I mean.
Yeah, when we, when we originally drafted this, I think we had some discussion about how much they should be.
I can't remember what I said, but I, I did remember that I looked at Eureka's and didn't think this was that far out.
Okay.
All right. Next on the agenda, consider a public hearing notice on zoning regulations, zoning maps, and map tables.
Okay, I drafted, circulated, and posted a, uh, draft version of the public hearing, the notice for public hearing. And in some study I've done since doing that, uh, I am inclined to recommend that we take the word "formal" out of the first sentence, so it says, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held. The difference between the two is this issue of, uh, the legislative hearings that we have, when we are talking about zoning ordinances and approval in front of a, or by a Planning Commission that's considered legislative, those kinds of hearings are for gathering public opinion and making certain that it's aligned as best we can with the public opinion. And so the formal hearings are the ones of the quasi-judicial that you make on your, um, having appeals and evidence is presented and that kind of thing. So, we need to strike the word "formal" from our draft. And I also want to bring up the, the question of the timing of the meeting. August ninth is the second Tuesday of the month when we'd normally have our Planning Commission meeting. And in the notice, I put it for six P.M. to accommodate the public for after-hours work. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And then another research that I did, uh, there was a couple of court decisions made by either Georgia or North Carolina, that the notices weren't sufficient because the people reading the notice didn't have a clue it might affect them. So, the question I have, is it clear enough that, that this regarding planning zoning regulations, zoning map, and map table to be considered for recommendation for the city of Holiday Island? Does that tell people in their mind when they read that, this might affect me?
I mean, what, what else would you say?
Well, what else you would say is you could take that document, just read, and you go up to the purpose statement of what the regulations are for, and it's about five sentences of what zoning regulations are for. And it talks about growth, population, uh, protecting property value, all those words are in that, in that purpose statement. It would add about, uh, twenty-five dollars to the cost of posting, we did that. I just want to be sure that we've done the right thing in this notification. Are we letting people know what we're doing, or about to try to, what we're, what we're trying to propose?
What, what is it handed up?
It says regarding, it says, the post it says regarding planning zoning regulations on a map and map table to be considered for recommendation for the city of Holiday Island. That's the purpose that we're having a public hearing. Does the public understand that it may affect what they can do with their property by saying that? Or not, so.
What?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, we-
What else would you think it meant?
Yeah, we say where they can go and read the documents.
Right.
So, I mean, if they don't go and read the documents.
We're gonna have it posted in the newspaper, we're gonna have it posted on five locations on the island, on half a dozen of social media.
And our website, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a, an image that'll show up very clearly on the website.
Another thing we can do is we could, we could, uh, post on the Heisid newsletter a more detailed explanation of what the hearing can say. I mean, I, I mean, there are going to be people that don't understand it, I mean, you've got a significant number out there thinking we were talking about trash today.
So have we, have we looked at other cities posting notices?
I looked at eighteen of them. You want to see them? I have them here.
How you feel about that?
I, I, I was pretty, I took, started with what was in the Carroll County News and took better parts of other ones and thought I made it better and stronger by what I changed, so.
It's better.
I think it's better. Not arguing, I'm just, I'm asking the question, so that, because we're accountable for what we're gonna post.
I, I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
I, I think what you have here is sufficient because if we go into more detail trying to explain what zoning ordinances are and how they might affect you and everything else, then we can still always be accused of not being clear enough and. I mean, the, the best thing for people to do is they're interested, is to go to the website and read the document.
Unfortunately, it's real close to the top of the document, your, your, your.
Yeah, it's in the purves. Okay. The only other concern that I have is getting a response back from our attorney on our amendments. If it's timely enough, because I have a deadline, well, it depends which newspaper we go with, but one of the newspapers has a July nineteenth deadline to get it in the paper, in time to be in the paper fifteen days before the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's my only concern, that the timeliness. I have to submit it to this newspaper by the nineteenth, yes.
Adjust them here. It's satisfied.
Yeah. Can you do?
Well, we have to have, what was suggested one state is that the documents be available when we make the posting. We certainly have to have it available a certain number of days before the actual hearing on August nine.
If, um, does the document being, uh, presented and discussed in the public hearing need to be the final draft of the document that goes before the city council for, uh, approval?
Uh, the document that's presented in the hearing is the one that the public will comment to that the planning commission will consider recommending to the city council.
Without modification.
Well.
Well, I, I guess what they're saying is if, if, if we go, if, if, uh, if, uh, we go with what we have here.
Okay.
You know, cleaned up with, so it's not.
Take all the edits out.
Red, blue, green and everything else.
Right.
Um, and then, you know, the day after the hearing or a week after the hearing, Justin comes back and he says, I think we need to do some minor changes to the wording on this and wording on that. Does that invalidate the hearing?
Um, in the, in the regulation that we're proposing, those kinds of changes, if they're minor, that don't affect the substance of it, you can make those changes without having another hearing.
I think we're close enough to the final, we have, I don't think Justin is gonna make very many or any wholesale changes anymore.
I mean, we did everything that he asked to be added and improvised.
I, and I put in the, the larger font as my additions just to help edit it, make it more clear for us.
I mean, but he just does it to clarify and make it legal ease, I mean, I don't see that that's.
If it doesn't change the intent, I'll.
Doesn't change the intent. Because there, after that public hearing, I'm sure there are going to be some changes that the council will make.
Well, my thought was there probably changes will happen yet that evening because following the hearing, that, that hearing will be adjourned and we'll have our commission meeting and we'll talk about what amendments we need to make based on what we just heard. And that would be what we would recommend when we say, that's what we're implementing through resolution to the city council. And it's my understanding we don't need another public hearing before the city council considers it because the hearing takes place at the planning level, the planning commission recommends it, the city council says, okay, we're gonna adopt it, or they repeat it, send it back. It could be changed again.
Well, except the planning commission and the city council are the same, so.
Excuse me?
I mean, the, the planning commission and the city council are the same, so, I mean.
Right, but there was gonna be a, a transfer, there was gonna be a week of time, it was gonna transfer between the ninth meeting and the city council meeting the following Tuesday. So something may happen, you know, something may be said, some points might be made.
To meet your deadline, should the man consider a special meeting?
Well.
Have a, a public hearing, the, uh, I don't know.
And I didn't read anything in the statutes about changing a public hearing once you make a notice.
Yeah, probably.
Probably not, probably not good, yeah.
Well, if anything, you might, not, I, what I was just gonna say was you may not have time for both the hearing and planning commission meeting to follow, depending on how many comments you get at the public hearing.
Well, in our public hearing, the, uh, there are gonna be rules set, set out aside as long as everybody knows what the hour when we start that we can limit it to one hour pro and one hour against, or you can limit it to, um, three minutes per person and only thirteen people to speak. You can set up whatever rules you need in this informal hearing. So you can, you can have some control of how long it lasts.
One thing we did in Oklahoma that's worked well is that they're, like in your case, the pros and the ones against it are usually clearly aligned and ask them if, you know, after two or three of them speak, that they appoint somebody to speak on behalf of that side of the issue.
Or if you don't have anything.
If you don't have anything new.
Yeah.
I mean, you can control it that way, that worked pretty well.
That would be part of the rules that are communicated before you start.
Yeah, I was, uh, I had a question kind of on the same line as, we say that the hearing is at six P M. Should we put an end time on there that the hearing is going to be from six to seven or six to eight or something like that?
I, I don't think we'd put an end on it. I think we need to judge that when the meeting starts or just before, you know?
I mean, at some point, if the comments will become redundant, then, then you can just gather it over.
I don't know how much interest there'll even be at the hearing. Didn't they be that?
Well, it would be my hope that, uh, certain parties would use the second piece and notify us via a letter so we have that document that I have a problem with sixteen dot oh three for about thirty.
I mean, the fact that we've got the table that's part of this.
Right.
And it, you know, virtually every lot for itself, uh, people could come and complain about, you know, the zoning on their particular lot.
And that would be the, probably the most important piece for people to do is to look at the unit block lot table, find their property and see how it's zoned, and then go into documents and say, what does that mean?
Or, or conditional uses that they have or need from your property. So we may be talking about their own little world. So we could go on and on.
So which newspaper has the, uh?
Well, that'd be, that'd be our next bullet of agenda, if this notice is okay.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, okay. For the newspapers, I investigated Carroll County News, Eureka Springs Independent, Lowly County Citizen, and the Ozark Mountain Trader. I believe all of them are published by the Carroll County News. And the recommendation from the, uh, Arkansas Press Association was the Carroll County News. And, uh, I guess they had several reasons for Jerry might share why they thought maybe it was the right one to use.
Well, the, the biggest one is that Carroll County, the county has declared that as the paper of record for Carroll County.
Okay.
Which at some point, if, if we choose, we may want to do that, where there's, the, the people know where to look.
Okay.
You know, follow suit, name it, our paper of record.
Right.
That would be my recommendation.
In other words, the county puts all their notices on there all the time.
Correct.
Right. And I have some.
Well, I can't say that because they don't run many, they probably not run all they're supposed to, but.
And I.
That would be my recommendation.
And I concur with that. I, in the postings that I copied, the clippings from, uh, Eureka Springs and, uh, Green Forest and Berryville have all used the Carroll County News for different purposes that are city business.
They use their budgets in there when you're.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we have to keep the record of that, uh, of that posting?
Yes, sir. It's, it'll be public record, you know. What I'll have is, I'll have the document we sent them and then the, well, I'll go on. If we chose Carroll County News, they require that their public notifications go through a special app. And it's the app they use to format them, and I've done that, and that's the, if you pull that image up, that's what it would look like in the newspaper, and it calculates the estimated cost. It's not per, to the penny, but it's estimated cost. So this posting has an estimated cost of thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. With that app, then, yeah, they create an affidavit and it was posted, so that's the document we also sent.
Did any of the other publications mention that, that that's how they would do it?
Nope.
That ought to tell you something.
Another reason I was going to recommend Carroll County News. There's a small flat fee and I'm, I'm calculating on this forty dollar posting, it's about, about five bucks to use the app. So I don't think that's, that's pretty.
Another thing is that, uh, legal rates are set by the state statute, so everyone should charge the same. I would bet if you called and got rights from some of those others, they could be more than what that app showed you.
Okay. Um, the app, uh, I computed it based on point five cents a word as well, my understanding of the requirement is that they charge municipalities public notices. So with that, I'd make a motion that we, uh, use Carroll County News for our notifications.
Second motion to use Carroll County News. Second one. And, uh, made, the motion made by Lynn, the second is by Jerry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Right, it's Carroll County News.
And I want to back up. I had made the motion that, uh, this, uh, public hearing notice has changed for moving the word formal would be used for, or by, or, uh, public about the public hearing.
Right. So move, Lynn second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, last item on our agenda is the conservative planning calendar. You may have noticed that we went through the regulations, it's talking about setting meeting dates based on a planning calendar that the city council approves. And I did some work with, uh, with the, the Google app and the, uh, uh, where's we store our files?
Or our?
Google Drive. They have a feature on there called, uh, calendar. And when you open it up, then whoever has access to that, which is just limited to a couple of people, uh, we can put events on the calendar and then you can create a link that we put on the page or on our, uh, city website. So I did that on two places for testing. I did it on the city's meetings page and also on this planning commission meetings page. There's a link there to get to the calendar. The purpose for that calendar is to do like, uh, some cities, you put on materials deadlines, public notice deadlines, agenda deadlines, meeting, uh, dates, use it for whatever the city is wanting to have so that you have, uh, notice to the public when these meetings and these deadlines occur. Uh, it was recommended by Justin that we do that, that we adopt the planning calendar. So I guess what I was suggesting is that this is the method we use. There are other, there's a dozen apps out there you can buy that make, uh, real fancy calendars and how they work, I'm not sure because they all cost something. This one doesn't cost anything. So I'd move that we adopt the Google Drive calendar system for our planning calendar.
Oh, sorry.
All right, we made a motion to approve or to use, uh, Google calendar.
Google calendar.
For our planning calendar. Then, uh, seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So you guys are gonna get that set up and?
Yeah, it's already created. I'll just have to train Lynn on how to update the machine, uh, who's, who's behind to do that for the city business. I already have, uh, just for testing, I put the city planning commission for the second Tuesday and the city council for the second, or third Tuesday, so it's out there already. And I made a note on here of the deadline for our public notices at the twenty-fifth. That's the deadline to have it viewed in the paper. But for us, I have to get it to the newspaper by the nineteenth, so it's on there twenty-sixth posted. For advances of the week because of the fifteen days. That's viewable on our city website. Anyone can click on that and see the calendar.
All right.
On what page is it?
It's on the city's meeting page, and a link is also on the planning commission meetings page, both places.
Anything else before we move on to public comments? Public comments. Anybody want to make a comment? I could probably take this opportunity to introduce David Dobrin. Stand up, give a speech. David's our.
Four score, three minutes ago.
David is now our building inspector and is probably fielding calls from all over the country wondering if they can build a yurt on the lot they just bought. But, uh, yeah, he's taken, uh, taken our responsibility for issuing building permits and he will be the, the first line of defense, I guess, for variances. A lot of the things we talked about today, the, he'll be the first one to hear about variances being required. And, um, he has no authoritative grant variances, so it will go to somebody for appeal.
He had, that he, he has no authority to even make a recommendation?
Well, you can, you can tell people how they can change their plans so that it doesn't require.
So who, who, if he sees something that he doesn't like, who denies that? You know? I guess I misunderstood something.
Yeah, I mean, he, as, as an example, the use, example I used before that somebody wants to build a patio and it's gonna be six feet or six inches into the, the, um, easement, the ruried yard easement. You know, in the past, the planning commission for years would look at it and say, yeah, that's, that's okay. But now the building inspector won't be able to say that. It's either, you know, it's either inside the, the, uh, easements or it's not. So, um.
But he, he could come to the planning commission and say, this guy's within six inches, I recommend that based on this.
It, it wouldn't be for him to do that. It would be for whoever's applying for the building permit would have to make that appeal.
And whose decision finally is that? You three guys sitting up here or?
Land.
The planning commission.
And who is that?
Currently, it's the city.
But it's a different meeting and a different board.
But can't we ask him for his opinion?
Of course.
That's, I think that's what Jerry's asking.
No, yeah, I mean.
Not to make the decision, he's more knowledgeable than I am. I want to know what he thinks about it.
I mean, that, that would be a big help in making a decision.
Especially not understanding the reasons.
Yeah. Providing input is, is no problem, but I don't, I don't want the building, or we don't want the building inspector to be the, um,
Branding variances.
Yeah, to do all the, to do all the gopher work for somebody that, uh, that wants to do something that's outside the.
Can I, uh, ask what his qualifications are? Was he a building inspector from another county or?
He, he was a general contractor for many, 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 many years. So. But again, you know, his, it's not his job to grant variances. His job is pretty black and white. It's either, it's either in code or it's not.
Okay.
So.
Just trying to figure out how this works, so it will still be up to you guys. So you just kind of go between now.
Um, well, yeah. If a variance is required, I guess, each step one in the process.
Just trying to figure out how this works.
Okay, um, so, any other public comments? If not, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Hearing none?
None, none. Jared did? I know in the past that we, uh, not responded to, uh, social media posts, but, I mean, the misinformation that's out there that spreads across about six different platforms, I think somebody should at least try to set the record straight. I mean, up until today, there was a significant amount of people thought we were talking about trash today. At some point. Well, I, I don't know if it's been names, but it came off of social media. Well, do you do social media?
No.
Well.
No.
People infuriated.
I'm not, not going to.
The missing, well, but the thing is, a lot of the, the, uh, anxiety and resentment is because of the misinformation posted about anything.
Yeah.
And, you know, at, at some point, I mean, it doesn't have to be anymore, but, you know, you understand what you think is happening, but here's, here's what, here, here's the correct information.
Well, a lot of it starts out as I heard or rumor has it.
Yeah, rumor has it, I, I mean, and then it's the gospel.
I can tell you from personal experience, early on, I tried to do that, I tried to be helpful, I tried to be informative, and it got me nowhere. Because the people that start the rumors, you know, it'll, they'll, they'll just twist it around. Uh, I'm gonna use an example. Um, a couple of years ago, somebody had a, um, a, um, out of the ordinary water bill, a couple hundred dollar water bill. And there was, you know, you know, like, three pages of comments about, you know, everything that you can imagine, about how bad everything is and, and, uh, you know, why are the, you know, water bills are so high and everything else. I put on there, um, you're not gonna find an answer to your problem on Facebook. Call the district office, they routinely help people find water leaks. And if they, if you find and fix your water leak, in many cases, they'll even adjust your water bill. The very next post, now it's a big secret, we can't even talk about it on Facebook.
No, I understand that.
So, I mean, it just.
But there, there are posts now talking about that very issue, about why the city is not improving the water service. And somebody ought to say, the city, that's a district situation, I mean.
The more you say it, the more they are giving.
Well, okay.
Jerry, I've, I've done some reading about FOIA and, uh, responsibilities of, of, of public elected officials and social media. And everything I read is, it's basically recommended to stay away from it because what happens is you get drawn into a conversation and then you're accused of having.
No, I, I agree with that wholeheartedly.
But that's probably get drawn into it because the feedback comes back with, yeah, but what about, and so you have to, you feel like you have to answer that question.
Well, I mean, I'm only going to vote, but I would think that when somebody says, we gotta come down here and fight, uh, uh, sanitation ordinance, we've already had that fight, uh, that it would be appropriate for the city to say, now, we understand, you know, the concerns about that, but this meeting is on zoning. And, you know, and if they run with that, then there's nothing we can do. The city just let that, uh, spread like wildfire.
One thing that I did find is says, if you only point to what's already happened, you point to a reference, you don't get in trouble doing that. Just have to avoid a conversation about future business.
No, I, I agree with that bit.
About future business, and, and when you're talking about come to a meeting, that's somebody's idea of a future business. So that's what makes it difficult, that's a recommendation they're giving.
May I, may I make a comment? First of all, I really appreciate the mayor's messages, those have been very helpful. And, um, encouraging people to come to the meetings. I mean, this is a brand new city and I've been coming to the planning commission meetings, and who's here?
You, you have been all along.
And so I'm just telling people, if you wanna know what's going on, if you care about what the city is gonna be, come to the meetings. Yeah, maybe it'll be boring for a while and maybe nobody wants to hear about chicken coops, although I suspect our new building inspector's happy that he's not gonna have to inspect chicken coops. But, but, but the thing is, people need to be told, if you wanna know what's going on, come to the meetings. And then you can address these things, and, and I say that, you know, when people make comments about, like, right now the water, I think the person that's bringing that up is very new to the community. And, um, the response is, if you care about it, come to the meetings. And if you have to sit here for an hour and a half, a few hours, then you did, but that's how you're gonna know what's going on. And we just have to come to the meetings. But I do appreciate Mr. Mayor giving those.
For purposes of this meeting, I think, but all I can say is, you know, if we are going to start responding to social media, we need to think it through, we need to have, um, we need to look at our social media policy, see how it applies or how the policy would apply to these situations. Um, and then we would have to identify who our communications official or officer or what is going to be so that there's only one source responding to all of those, and that source is, um, you know, has the correct information, the most recent correct information. And, uh, so if we, if the city council wants to take that up, I'd be more than happy to put it on the agenda that we, uh, explore that possibility. I, I agree with some of it, needs, probably needs to be addressed.
With, with this one post, this one post saying, you know, you know, whoever it is, you know, no, that's not the intent of this ordinance. That's not a city responsibility. I said hadn't, uh, shy away from posting our phone number when they don't have, uh, it's not under their purview, call I said. But to just let that, uh, that erroneous, uh, post just grow and it jumps from group to group to group across Facebook, over the next door, uh.
That's part of the problem too, is what social media sites are you going to monitor, respond on? You know, it's. The demo's, because next one great, what's really, really going on holiday on.
Yeah, yeah. But what's really just started a week ago.
Yes.
You gotta, you gotta be fast to keep up.
Well, I, I think the lady that she mentioned had pulled her post off of one of the platforms, it was so misguided, but. I, I may be the long ranger on that, but it just pisses me off, so.
I think as long as you put out factual information that, you know, ties to the website or meeting minutes or something like that. It's not supposition about future activities, you're probably safe. You don't wanna, you don't wanna try to engage in an argument back and forth.
I, I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying correct with misinformation, but anyway.
Alright, anything else?
Yes. No, you almost need to put it separately. I would, you know, rather than responding to their, to start a different post that says, when they start talking about the water bills, you know, the, the city's taking on a lot of responsibilities, but the water isn't working. Then I said can explain to them that we're not drawing water from the aqua four, that we have our wells that drill past the aqua four. But, yeah, we're not gonna, you know, we're not stealing Eureka Springs water, which is the accusation today.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're deleting the aqua four and we're gonna be sued by all these other cities for taking their, for stealing our water. I, I just waiting for a week. We, we all that don't monitor, monitor, yeah, and just look at it.
I, I look at my schedule once in a while and then I realize I don't wanna be involved. And Chris reads that stuff to me and says, Chris.
Yeah, if, uh, we, we can take this up in the city council meeting, that's not a planning commission, uh, issue.
Got the seat, pass the buck.
If somebody wants to make the recommendation at the city council meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll consider it. Anything else for the planning commission today, schedule?
Um, the next meeting that is gonna be in our notice is August nine, six P M, following the public hearing.
Alright. Alright, anything else? Move to adjourn? Public hearing, move to adjourn, second?
Second.
Lynn seconded it, any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Propose, we're adjourned.